I talked about the access, Ione Avenue and nineteenth Avenue are both arterial streets. The traffic study that was prepared with the secret document. Indicated or concluded that with this first phase of development. The intersection will operate fine as a four way stop. But when everything is built out, the second phase of the development and the industrial, there's going to need to be a signal at that intersection. So we've included a condition stating that. And determined that the applicants, both applicants together paying their impact fees would be suitable mitigation. For the signal those those monies will go into the impact fee fund that the city has, which. We can then use to pay for a signal to be put in. Yes.
And that's nineteenth and Iona?
Did I say something different?
No, I just clarify.
Yes, nineteenth and Iona. We reviewed the site plan based on the commercial standards that the city has for architecture and site design. It site meets all of those standards. We also looked at the findings necessary for alcohol sales compatibility. We're okay there. We're not located within five hundred feet of a park or a school or religious land use. The project meets the standards for distance from intersection for drive approaches. There's also an administrative use permit that Christie's reviewing at the staff level. For the drive through lanes and it meets all the standards for drive through lanes. Once they build that in the future, we did work with the applicant on some landscaping. We got a little bit of additional landscaping and I think you see there's a condition in there. Didn't really realize until after he'd submitted that. The city now controls part of the nineteenth Avenue right of way. That goes up the slope there. So that area then we can, because it's not Caltrans. We can have that landscaped and the applicants has agreed to that condition already says he'll change the landscape plan to. To put some landscaping on that slope. For the future industrial park, there's a mitigation measure. That because there's there's housing to the further east. Along that property boundary. And so there's a mitigation measure which will apply when they submit a parcel map or whatever, or some other entitlement. That says they need to, there's no buildings within twenty five feet and no outdoor storage. Over six feet high and to put in a block wall. Other than that, the environmental assessment came back with just standard conditions for. Previewing the site for any biological or cultural resources before the grading starts. The Tachia tribe sent a letter as they have on most sites in this area to have someone on site to. Observe during grading. And so in your staff report and in the draft resolution, there are. Recommended approval findings as well as recommended conditions that would be applied to the conditional use permit. Because there's this includes a general plan amendment and a zone change, your decision is only a recommendation to the city council. And we'll be taking all of these items as a package to the council at the, I think we're planning the May sixteenth meeting. So I'm open for any questions.
In reading through the. The many pages that we had to read through.
Yeah.
It talked about the the greening effect of. Climate change and all that kind of stuff in terms of lighting, et cetera. And there was a sentence in there that said, this may include. All these things. I'm wondering why it's may include rather than will or shall include.
Do you remember what those things were? Cause I'm having trouble re my remembering that.
Should have written down which slide that was or something like that. But but. It had to do with lighting, you know, so they're using lighting. It had to do with the. Fueling and EV vehicles and it had to do with the. There was a third thing.
There was a, I know that they may have copied the Caltrans letter. Is the Caltrans letter that we got. Was written in that way. It said, here's a bunch of things you could do, which we have. Which I recently learned talking to somebody at Caltrans is there. They're kind of backing off on. Specific project review of requiring telling cities to require certain things and instead they're suggesting things and hoping that the city. Then turns around and requires it. But I think what we did is we said, well, then we're going to take it word for word, put it in. Regarding lighting, we, the city already has a standard that commercial lights, especially in parking lots need to be shielded so they only shine down onto the property. And not not up into the sky or onto adjacent properties. I I will add, I did think it a little humorous that Caltrans. Tried to recommend that the Maverick customers walk or bike to the site. And I was like, to get gas? I don't know, but. But. But I will say we, you know, there will be sidewalk put in on Iona. It'll connect to the sidewalk that's already on that nineteenth Avenue. And the. Road is wide enough that when the that there. That for bike lanes. Now that, yeah, they will be wide enough for bike lanes. It's obviously not. Built out farther east, but at least, you know, as other developments occur, they'll eventually be able to be a bike lane on on Iona.
That would be good. And then I have chicken and red chicken EV stations because we don't have like four or five of those in the community. And the number of vehicles is increasing and it's getting more difficult. To to find places to do that. We have gas pumps. A whole lot of them. Okay, it's nice to see the diesel in the semi. Cause I think we really need that as well, which Maverick will do. And also the big motor homes and big RVs. You just can't pull those into any gas station in town. We need a thing for this. So I think that's really great. I think one thing that needs to go along with that is the EV part.
EV part. Did you remember, Christie? Did they ask if there was a requirement for EV? This is where we told them there wasn't. Is that right? That the city didn't have a standard. Don't remember. Do they have? Yeah, I don't think we have a requirement right now, but I I get the sense they may put some in anyways. And if the market demand happens, then they'll, they've got a lot of room on their site to add them in.
I think we need that kind of requirement to go along with everything else. That this project seems to be doing that is a need, in my opinion, for our community. Lots of reasons. Okay.
Yes, nineteen and Bush had had included some.
Okay. So part of this approval will also be changing the east part of the lot, you said, of that section to light industrial, right?
Correct.
And that's going to be the same zoning that's just south of Iona?
Yes.
Is there potential then that we're going to have like the auto wrecking could go in? Do you know what I'm saying?
If it did, it would be, we require it to be built to a much higher standard.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just thinking in the future, the people that.
No, we have, we have, we have several industrial site design standards that were not in place when those.
Right, so more than likely something like that could not happen today.
The the. The impression, I mean, he can always change it because he hasn't applied yet, but the impression Mr. King gave us. Was that he's going to maybe look to divide it up into maybe two acre lots.
Okay.
With a, you know. Ten thousand, fifteen thousand square foot building on each one that he can then sell off to to people.
Yeah, okay. So each of those lots will be its own parcel. Is that correct? Like he could sell each.
Then he could sell them all. Yeah, if he did a parcel map. Then he could, he could do it that way. The only thing we told him. Specifically, well, we told him two things specifically, he needed his own. Ponding Basin.
Yeah.
And we asked, or well, we strongly asked that he include a stub street. On the north end because that. The neighborhood to the east. Only has one way in and out right now, and we're trying to find a way to get. Those roads connected.
Where would that be on this map? When you say on the north end?
Right up here. There's a retirement, routine basis.
That's retaining, okay.
The point, the point of the site.
Up here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's for that one neighborhood.
Yes.
Where this so is, okay.
Okay, alright.
Cause we're thinking with, with the, we're thinking if we can get a stub street to there, then we could go to that. The property owner, which is the church. And at a minimum, maybe get an easement for emergency access.
Okay.
If we ever need it.
Okay.
Block wall. Yes, yeah. So there'll be a, but we'll, when the industrial goes in, we'll require a block wall adjacent to the residential.
Okay. Just north of, I know this, this is a little bit off, the residential area right there, just north of it. That kind of funky triangle there, is that, can they build up there also as in residential or is that, okay?
Yes, it's zoned.
So potentially a block wall could just run the whole thing.
It could run the whole way up to the, to the highway. Yeah, that the church owns that site, whole site right now.
Oh, they do. Okay.
Yeah, but it's zoned for residential.
Okay.
That piece of dirt, I've lived here twenty five years and it hasn't changed much in twenty five years, except with the overpass. And I think this has a lot of potential for our community, something that needs to happen to enhance. Business for our community and growth for the community. It's got things that we don't currently have. That we ought to have, in my opinion, that we ought to have. So this looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the big thing is is the diesel, like you said, the being able to get big rigs and big motor homes into there. The the gas stations. You know, it's not not like we really need more gas stations, but it's going to come with it. So it is what it is. And I don't see anybody here to. Argue that fact so far, but you know, I see a lot of forty foot motor homes in our community. And I don't see too many gas stations.
No.
That they can pull into and either get gasoline or diesel fuel. So I just see this as a little bounce. Yeah, I think that having EV charging stations would be great. And my only concern would be is not having control on what actually might go into that section. By the residential.
It may come before us. They'll, they'll, they'll come back unless they. Well, even if they designed the whole site, you'd have site plan review. So they'll come back.
It was like, like he was saying about, you know, you don't want a wrecking yard going in.
Yeah, like on the south side.
On the south side or a scrapyard or something.
Wrecking yard for sure would require a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we open it up for public comment?
Good evening, planning commission, Tommy Nix. I'm one of the eastern residents out there on Iona Avenue. This is the second time that our area has come up for a reclassification, rezoning. So we own the two acre lot that's kind of off to the east side. I love the fact that we're trying to get a gas station in here. There's something that needs to be built out there, some sidewalks for the kids to be able to, you know, transport themselves safely. However, I'm a little concerned about the slippery slope of what goes in next. With us being, you know, a residence, we're right behind a trucking yard. That trucking yard produces some noise and stuff like that, but they're usually pretty good, pretty respectful. You get a few more businesses in there, you're not necessarily always going to get the same thing. With the lighting and stuff, you know, that's kind of the big concern that we have is what comes in next. So the Maverick idea sounds great. But we also, it's already been brought up, we don't have an an egress route for those that are over on Vine, which was a requirement when they built those houses five years ago. So the houses over there are less than five years old. That means that you want to have some kind of egress, you want to have some kind of protection for the residents that are there. Trying to think what else. Sorry, this, this was a, this is all a lot of last minute, like a lot of this stuff has come through really quickly. But I know the city has been planning it for a little bit longer because a few months ago I was told about the truck stop going in. And there was going to be truck scales and stuff like that involved. I sell truck scales, so. Had a little opportunity, learned a little bit about it, but I hadn't seen anything from the city until about two weeks ago. So I'm a little concerned about the rush of it and also the lack of residents that aren't here. I'm pretty sure there's a lot more residents that would love to come in at least tell you what's going on out there. Five years ago, we were supposed to have the first or the next elementary school built over there on Iona. At the corner of Iona and Vine, that was part of the city plan when we purchased our house ten years ago. There was more residents that were supposed to be built in along with a little bit of commercial mixed in there. So, you know, being being changed again for the second time, it's. It's a little, I'm not unnerving, I'm glad to see progress in the city, but at the same time coming so fast, so quick. That's kind of where we're stuck at, you know, glad to have a Maverick, but not sure we want the lot next to us for mixed use, commercial use, twenty four seven operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nix.
To say that we, the city manager has at the the planning commission meetings and the city council meetings. Mentioned that Maverick, that staff are working on the site plan and what have you. And then I just want to let you know that this will come to the site plan itself for Mavericks won't. But the the package for the zone change general plan amendment will go to city council. In May and in June. So, yeah, so you'll get notices again.
Thank you, Christie.
We did receive the city council notice after receiving the training.
We allowed to respond to that?
Which way to a comments over?
I understand.
Hi, I'm Rachel Nix. I am the wife to Tommy Nix and. I spend most of my time on that property just east of here with four beautiful daughters and. I'm very nervous about what's going to go in right next to us and. I don't know, like Lamar is changing very fast and sometimes it's for the good, like we just got a brand new. Housing development behind us. My kids have a couple of new friends and we have that new Freedom Elementary. So it, there are things that are going in that are great, but. I'm just, I'm very nervous and you can even ask the trucking guys, they have a water runoff. I asked them to go fence that in because I have babies. I don't want them. Walking into, you know, an unfenced. Runoff. So I just, I'm very nervous about what you guys might approve to go in when you approve this mixed use. And we're also business owners, so we know how much it takes to have a business and we come in, the people that are putting new business in. Businesses in Lamar, we've been running an escape room for five years here in downtown and so we do appreciate everything that goes into Lamar. And that's one of the reasons why we're raising our babies here, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Nix.
You have any questions for the developer?
You guys have any questions for the developer? They're on the line, but I guess they're not saying anything right now. No. So we're, we're good on public comment then, everybody? Okay, let's, let's close public comment then. And turn it over to the commission for recognition.
Missioners, if you're okay, I'd like to address some of the public comments.
That's alright.
Yep. I would like to say the one great thing about a planning commission like this is it's made up of citizens just like you. That we are in all parts of the city and we have the same concerns you guys have. As you can see, some of the first comments that came up were. If we approve this, part of the approval is what is going to be the new zoning next door. And it said in our packet, it's going to be the same as what's south, so that immediately raised some flags with us like, wait a minute, are we going to, can, is there a possibility of seeing? What's going to be there? So we have the same concerns and another thing is when they do get ready to do it, it will come before us again. So it's a great time for you all to come up and also voice your concerns and this will also, I believe, go to the city council also. So we're doing what's called a recommendation and it'll go to them. So and we're actually glad to see you here. Trust me, everybody likes seeing when the public comes. We do. We do. It gets boring if, if you're not here, so we like to hear what everybody's saying, right? So hopefully that eases your concerns. We're not beholden to the city or anything like that, we're beholden to the citizens, we always want to do what's best for them. So. That's my comment.
I'd just like to add. Add to, I. Completely get where you guys are coming from, I would feel the exact same way. And I. I would, myself, I would never pass anything. To go in there that I would not want. Anywhere near my home.
I can deal with that, too, I've lived in L'amour all my life and seen a lot of. Good projects and other projects that need some scrutiny, but, uh. I think our commission is very. Cognizant about what's going on and will do the best. Things. And I think the south side of. One ninety-eight is an industrial. Area, this is zoned that way. And there are. Businesses out there, I mean, there is a. A wrecking yard. On the south side of Iona out there. There's a school district bus yard. Out there. There's a golf course out there. Uh, there's a. A cement plant. Out there, so there's a lot of vehicular traffic going in and out. So how do you get something that's going to match that? And, and complement that? I mean, it wouldn't do any good to, to go in and put a whole bunch of multifamily. Family homes there. That wouldn't fit. It's, it's not what needs to happen there, and it's not beneficial with the community. And having people like you come and talk to us, you have different perspectives, because we all have our own perspective. Which we all harbor is probably a pretty good one. But it's not the only one, and we need to hear from other people say. Maybe we should have thought of that, maybe we should have thought of that. So what is best for the community? For twenty-six thousand, thirty thousand people. That currently live here. And more that are going to live here. And more businesses that are going to come. So that's kind of part of the whole decision-making process. And, uh, there might be some ragged edges. But I think as, as a group. We're committed to, to make the best decisions we can. For the community.
Well, commissioners, when it comes to the gas station. I am. Highly in favor, it's gonna, it's more than likely gonna be local jobs. Maverick's a great company. Um. When I used to drive through the Midwest, they were all over, I do have some in Utah, they're.
They are.
Great, I think they're actually known for how well they treat their employees. So. It's a great company, and the cool thing is, the revenue is gonna come off that freeway. And keep it local, it'll be in the form of jobs and things like that.
I have to concur with that, right? I, I, I support this proposal.
And also, I don't think the mixed use was getting anywhere, like you had mentioned previous, right? Just nobody's. By, by changing that, you're going to get some. Um, interest. And then interest again will turn into jobs, jobs turns into homes, jobs turns into. Schools and revenue for them and things like that. But we need to be on our toes, right? When that area comes open.
Definitely.
Yeah. So.
But it is going to come back probably to us, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, we don't. I personally don't want a sore thumb. Out there on Iona and Nineteenth. Something that I can't be proud of. So I'd like me to walk down there and say, yeah, I was on the commission, we approved this. And I'm not ashamed of it. Okay? So we gotta make good decisions, just as him said here, gotta make good decisions.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, very well said, commissioners, um, thank you very much, uh, does anybody have any motions?
That will roll up.
It won't roll up.
She controls it.
I'm, I'm used to that at home, I know. So.
No, he, I almost did the same thing earlier, I was like, I, what is, I need to go farther. That's what I was doing earlier, I'm glad you guys didn't see me.
Somewhere there's a recommendation on here, that, that we have to be able to look at.
I would suggest the resolution itself. Which is, uh, all encompassing here.
Yeah, the proposed motion. You're, you're suggesting that.
Yes, I agree with the resolution, that's.
Is, is.
All right. I'll go ahead and make the motion, um. I, I make a motion to approve, to, to recommend that we, the planning commission, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three tag zero-three. Recommending approval of general plan amendment number twenty-twenty-three. Tag zero-one zoning map amendment number twenty-twenty-three tag zero-one. Conditional use permit twenty-twenty-three tag zero-one. And major site plan review number twenty-twenty-three tag zero-one, in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution.
I'll second.
Our motion has been seconded. Uh, let's, let's have a vote, Commissioner Clement.
Hi.
Commissioner, you going?
Hi.
Commissioner Need.
Hi.
Commissioner Couch.
Hi.
And I, Commissioner Franklin, approve?
He carries.
Okay. Moving on. To item number five. The discussion for the VMT and Sequo process for the city of L'amour.
Yes, thank you, Steve Brown, again. So in July one of twenty-twenty, Senate Bill seven forty-three became effective, um. I don't think. A lot of us were paying attention in July twenty-twenty, anything else besides the pandemic, so this one, we're, we're a little late. Addressing this issue, but, um, but we're here now and we, and we've got. Um, I think what, we, we've got a good, uh, plan and a good study here, so. First, to, to set this up, uh, VMT stands for vehicle miles traveled. It's a measurement of. Um. The miles. That vehicles would travel to or from a certain land use, so. Um. We. In Sequa, we measure the impacts of traffic generated by a proposed. Land use or proposed project. Uh, up until this Senate bill was adopted. Um. Sequel always looked, considered that congestion was, was the impact to the environment. That Sequa should analyze, and so we. Did traffic studies, which, which measured what was called LOS or level of service, and so, a. Um. You looked at the roads and the intersections near the proposed land use. And if there was gonna be free-flowing traffic, no problems, it was level of service A, and if it was. Uh, total congested gridlock, it was level of service F. And most of the traffic was somewhere in between either a B, C, or a, or, or a D. Um, the city had adopted a threshold. Of saying that anything worse than D. Would be considered a significant environmental effect that you'd have to mitigate, either by. Adding a signal, as we, as I mentioned in the last project, or, uh, widening a road, or doing something like that. The Senate bill, which, um. Was, um. Recommended after a lot of studies. At the state level. Um, which you know they're focused. Pretty heavily on greenhouse gases, climate change, things like that, was to say, hey, the. The real impact of traffic is the effect that it has on. On greenhouse gas effects. And. They are saying, we're not so much concerned about congestion anymore, if cities want to deal with congestion, go ahead, but we're not gonna study that in the Sequo document anymore. So they are now saying we have to study. Uh, vehicle miles traveled, which has a connection to the amount of greenhouse gases that are gonna be generated. By the vehicles coming to and from the site. So we have a new. A new impact to measure, but we didn't have a threshold to say, well, when is it so bad that it would be considered a significant effect? That we'd have to mitigate or have to do an EIR to, to analyze. And. Absent having a threshold, the state provided a threshold. But it was pretty low. And it was. Probably going to make almost. All of our projects require an EIR. Which we don't want to do, and none of the other cities wanted to do, so. A lot of other cities have done what we're proposing here, which is to do a study. That would, where we would implement our own guidelines. Uh, based on, um. A scientific study, which, which is the studies in your packet, we, um, the city hired LSA. Who I know have done a number of these studies for other cities, they did one for Visalia, and they've done one for Hanford, that are very similar to what's, um. In, in your packet tonight. And what they did is they used the. The. Previous studies on, on air and the environment and greenhouse gases to develop. Um, thresholds that could apply specifically to L'amour. And so one of. One of the key things is to set, well, where. The state says, well, this. The whole state is the study area, well, we say, well. We did a study and said, well, ninety-five percent of the vehicle trips that either. Are in, either are in L'amour, or they leave L'amour, or they enter L'amour. Ninety-five percent of those don't leave the county. So only five percent of the vehicle trips that start or end in L'amour. Go outside the county. So from that, we can say, well, then Kings County can be our study area. Um, which is, which is also what Hanford used. Um. In their study. And from then, um, the document goes through different, um, scenarios to say, well. Um, here's certain. Types of land uses that you don't have to do a detailed analysis on, so, um. Things like. Um, if it's a local-serving retail business, less than fifty thousand square feet, it's pretty much assumed that. Almost all of those trips are gonna be local, somebody's not gonna come from Fresno to go to a local-serving business in L'amour. Um, gas stations. Um. Other, uh, small commercial businesses. Um. Public uses like churches, daycares, anything that's deemed to be local. We would say, well, you're screened out, we don't have to study you because we know you're gonna be under the threshold. Um, for residential projects and for larger commercial projects, there's, there's an average daily trip threshold. If they're under that, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't require a study. If they're over that, doesn't mean they're significant yet, it means just that there needs to be a study. And so then there would need to be a technical study done by someone probably like LSA or someone to, um. To back up the Sequa finding. So. Um. By adopting these thresholds. It will not eliminate the possibility of doing a detailed study, but it will significantly reduce the. Number of projects that we'll have to do a study, because we'll be able to use this. Overall study to screen them out and say, no, you're not going to be a significant effect. So it's. If you did get through it all. Kudos to you, um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, got a lot in it, um. Which is why we hired someone who's done a few of them, um, to prepare it, and it, and it's written in a way. That if we ever were challenged, we'd be able to, to back it up. So. Um. Where we don't need a recommendation from you, we're gonna be taking this to, to the city council for them to adopt as a policy. Uh, but we wanted to explain it to you so that you'd see the changes that we're going through with Sequa and, um, see if you had any questions about it before. You had a, a specific project, you know, right in front of you.
Question here?
Yeah.
On the slide that I'm looking at. It's got, uh, within the city of L'amour. Outside, within Kings County. Outside Kings County with sixty-five, thirty, and five percent. How reflective or similar is that to? Hanford? Or to Corcoran, or some other city? In our county, I mean, are, is that? Pretty much the same for everybody? Or are we an anomaly? And maybe we shouldn't use Corcoran right now, okay?
Um. Yeah, I, I, I don't, uh, we did have that conversation with LSA, because we had a number of, of meet, uh, video meetings with them. I. I, I wanna say that they, that Hanford was fairly similar. Um, because, uh, maybe not, maybe not ninety-five percent, but. But yeah, they, the. You guys in Kings County, you like to stay in the county.
Okay. I'm asking out of ignorance, guy.
Yeah.
All right, that would make sense to me.
Uh-huh.
But I didn't do the study, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will say, when I worked in Corcoran. Uh, it wasn't the best, because a lot of people in Corcoran went to Tulare. Person, a lot of their items, so.
Yeah, I could see that.
How can we keep people there, they were go, I mean, along, go to Hanford, there's Costco, Home Depot, those areas like that, Walmart. But people were going way too much to Tulare. I will say that, and they wanted to try to. Keep them from doing that, so it might be. Little bit higher than the five percent.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
But not significant.
That was Corcoran, yeah. Yeah. And the state will accept this, they'll be, you think they'll be good?
Well, I'll never promise the state will accept anything, but, um.
Cause you say.
This, this study is consistent with other studies that have been done for similar sized studies in this area.
Yeah.
And they haven't, nobody's been challenged yet.
Oh, there you go.
Um. But that's the thing, this is a fairly new, uh. Wrinkle in Sequa, and usually, things don't get. Ironed out until there's some challenges, and there haven't been any challenges that I know of. In the state about VMT yet. The, um, if you, if you can think about it, the larger cities love this. Because. They're much more dense. They don't have the room to widen their roadways or put in signals. And so, and, but for them, their trip counts are, are less. And if they're using public transit, bicycles, then those trips are completely off the table, because we're only measuring. Um, personal vehicle trips. Uh, the other thing, the, is interesting, VMT doesn't measure. Um. Industrial. Trips other than employees. And it, and it was a practical thing, because nobody could tell if that eighteen-wheeler was going to Fresno or to Sac, uh, Chicago. So, it's like, well, we're not gonna dig into it that much, we'll just. Deal with that some other way. So it only, so for industrial, it only focuses on employees. Um. Uh, for, the, this is. Probably gonna, um. Effect. Very large residential projects, you know, the Lacy Ranch project needed an EIR anyways. Um. It would have. Under this new policy, it still would have needed an EIR for VMTs.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Steve.
Okay.
There's no more questions on that, guys, uh, let's move on to our next discussion item, the potential ordinance changes to encourage housing development.
This is something that. Uh, Kristi and I have been working on since January. And I know we've teased it a few times at the meetings. Uh, saying that we're working on it and giving some ideas, but this is the first time that we brought to you something that's on paper and has some maps. Um. I know, uh, Commissioner Couch mentioned about the mixed-use zone wasn't really working. And that. That was part of the impetus of. The zone changes and the general plan amendment, which we're recommending is that, is wanting to. Do away from the mixed, now the mixed, do away from the mixed-use zone. There is still a mixed-use general plan designation in the downtown area, but they have different zones, they have DMX one, DMX two, DMX three, so it would, so the areas that are designated mixed-use and zoned mixed-use were the areas we are looking at. And there were really. Three. Other zones to, to zone those areas, it could either be one of the commercial zones, it could be a multifamily zone or an office. It could be a multifamily zone or an office zone. And so in looking at what was there. Um what we what's in your packet and there's there was one change we made after the. Um well, I don't know if it was after the packet went out, but we made it last week. And and it so we got the wrong, the the D and Bush Street area. You have a hard copy in front of you and that's that's the one that we're looking at right now, not the one that's in your packet. Sorry, is that the. Yes, that's the actor, that the one on the screen is the accurate one.
Okay.
So it's the one that has office zoning where the um. The medical offices, the swim school and the fleet reserve building is with those would be offices. So even in the office zone, all three of those uses would still be allowed uses, so we I. A lot of the sites were rezoning are vacant. Um which was part of the thing, because this is, this is. We're we're doing all this work under a grant that we received to from the state to try to increase. The potential to build housing, either by increasing our capacity or the speed at which we can get it approved. So um. Doing what we can to rezone the vacant sites to. A high density or medium density residential is what we were looking at the most. But obviously, there were some sites where it was like, well, that that site just really needs to be neighborhood commercial. Um you know, on the right on the Moore Avenue on one of those other sites or here on uh D Street. So. I think there were four sites. That are that have the mixed use, the one that's on the screen right now is just north of the college.
Mm hmm.
Um. That area didn't make a lot of sense anyways, because the the blue, which is community facilities. Didn't cover the entire city owned site, but also covered some area that wasn't city owned. Uh so we're making, so we're cleaning that up. And then um just continuing the multifamily along Bush with single family zoning behind it. Uh. And even though those like on the right side um. The low dense, the R L D low density residential, it's broken up into four, it looks like four, but that's actually just all one site. Um one of the other sites.
Do do all these owners, sorry, do all these owners know what the proposed?
Good question, so we've we. Our intent is to talk to the owners, I think we've only talked to two so far, we talked to Tony Olivera near Bush and D.
I was also asking about like you go into industrial, like they're they're okay with that, they go into industrial.
We're not on these, we're not making any changes to industrial.
Oh, no, okay, I was looking at over by Bush and D. Like how they got the neighborhood commercial along D.
Uh huh.
But then by Bush, you know, you've got those couple inside parcels, R H D. Is that what?
R H D is high density residential.
Oh, that's high dense, okay, you got it, yeah, all right, cool.
And that's one of Mr. Olivera's sites and he was, he was okay with having some high density residential. What he really wanted was the. The triangle shaped site, which is now zoned medium density residential on the left. He wanted to change to to neighborhood commercial and he said he would accept. Some high density in the back, what he would consider the back um in exchange for that, so. We think that makes a lot of sense. Um but to answer your broader question, we haven't talked to everyone yet, our intent is to do that before we bring this back to you as a hearing, so tonight.
So we're not voting on this.
We're not voting on anything tonight, no.
Okay, I was like, whoa.
Not voting tonight, this is an introduction. So that you we can get some feedback to see if we're on the right track, to see if we didn't go far enough, if we went too far. If there's if there's some other, if you have some other idea.
Mm hmm.
Of a way to help the city get more housing built. Where there's still time to add that into this project.
Do do we as a city, like do do we make any efforts to attract housing like? Or I don't know, I our phone calls made like because or do we just sit here with with a zoning and mixed use and say, hey, why isn't anybody coming? And like if we change.
Rousing.
Yeah. Cause like I'm a Realtor, like if I got a lot that's mixed use, I'm calling up anybody who I think can develop right there for something. And I'm saying, hey, I got this mixed use lot, you could do all this stuff here, like, do you want to come over?
Traditionally, cities haven't done that, they they focus on the commercial because that brings in the tax revenue. Um but. You know, we may be in an in a position soon because I think. You know, with. With the, you know, California lost population for the first census ever. And you know, but but the Central Valley still grew. During that period.
And businesses still look at a critical mass and a critical.
Yes, and we're more affordable than most of the states. So if we there, we may be entering a phase where we start. Uh lobbying for residential, don't don't know.
So for the rest of the commissioners, a lot of this is being um you're proposing neighborhood commercial, could you give an example of some neighborhood commercial businesses?
Um the Save Mart Shopping Center is neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
That's that's so neighborhood commercial, so grocery stores, small stores, small restaurants, um even larger restaurants, I suppose. Um Starbucks, yeah, the Starbucks Shopping Center is neighborhood commercial. The um the site you approved at nineteenth and Bush.
Yeah.
Is neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
So regional commercial is out by um forty one and Bush. Uh you know, that would be where we hoping to get, you know, larger retail. Uh buildings.
Christie, does this has anything to do with that grant that you were working on earlier or is that something totally separate?
That's something fun this, but the reason that we're doing this to hopefully help the property owner, she can develop property. While still keeping those of the state environment.
Okay.
So like Steve said, these are properties that don't seem to develop, so we're trying to figure out what can we do? That will be best for the property owners, should they either sell it or develop the properties.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of like when we, when we first set up the. The project, it was like, well, we have this issue, these sites aren't developing, the state is willing to give us money. To do what we need to do to encourage more housing, it it seems like a win win. So that that's kind of how we approached it and that's how we pitched it to the state to get the to get the grant money. Uh the other thing we said was. Um you know, we'll work on our processes to make them more efficient, make them faster and so. At a future meeting, I'm going to bring you some updates to our subdivision ordinance that our surveyors are working on. Um they're the ones that review the maps and so they've told me, hey, we can. If we make changes to the ordinance, we'll be able to review them faster.
Hmm.
And more efficiently, so so that'll that'll be coming to um. We've talked about the maps so far, if I don't want to take you off of those, but there's a lot of other text changes I at least want to introduce to you, so. We can go wherever you want to go on this, but um. And so if you want to go back to the maps at some point, you can, but I'm going to talk about this, oh, so we did the same um analysis. For what does this mean, what would the changes mean for potential housing altogether? Because the mixed use did have. Um housing potential, maybe not as high as the medium and the high density, it would be a net. Increase of two hundred and thirty two housing units.
Oh wow.
Um I was hoping for higher, but we'll take it.
Does does all that count the same whether it's low density houses or like multifamily housing?
No, so we hit, so the housing element assume even. We don't require, but we have to assume a certain density so that we can at least have a sense of how many houses. There's is potentially, so low density, we assume at four and a half units per acre. Medium density is at fourteen units per acre and high density is at eighteen per acre. Now, the mixed use. Had an assumption of nine. Which in my opinion is kind of high, but then at the same time, nobody built anything at all, so. The potential doesn't really seem to be as much as we have to say there there is there, so.
Could could it be that people may think that they have to have like something slash commercial and house or like a commercial and multifamily together?
Maybe it it might, that might be. Yeah, the um. I think the mixed use area was very well intentions, I've read, I've read through it a few times. But when. I've I've seen this before in other cities, when you go this long and nobody's building anything. You know, there's. There's maybe something wrong with your code.
Mm hmm.
Cause they're all shying away from it.
And once this comes back to us, will mixed use be done, there's no more besides what you said downtown?
We're gonna, we we decided is we are going to keep it in the text of the ordinance, so the zone is there, but it won't be on the map.
Gotcha, okay.
That way, if if a future commission ever sees a need for it, or if a developer comes in and says, that's the perfect zone for me. Then you could do a zone change and and bring it back. Uh the other, the other big thing in here that we've talked about before, we had the study session with the council is about minimum lot size. For a single family residential. Um. We've talked about that before, other valley cities. Have changed to six thousand, five thousand, forty five hundred, some as low as four thousand. Um. What we're starting at as a recommendation is at five thousand and we want to have that discussion with both you and the council. Um I don't know if you guys all agree yet, but we'll find out as we keep talking. Um but the the idea would be whatever the number is, is that's the minimum. Where you don't need a planned unit development or P U D to get your subdivision map approved, so. Um and that's how how other jurisdictions are doing it uh for. For most of my careers, I thought six thousand was. It for a lot of cities, I knew there were a few like Lamore and I think Lindsay has seven thousand, uh maybe Sanger. Um but a lot of them were at six, now a lot of them moved down to five and Fresno's at four.
As part of this discussion, how large the house is as opposed to how large the lot is. Cause I've seen some places not too distant from here where there's like. Two story house and there's eight feet between adjacent homes.
Yes.
I mean, it's hard to get a lawnmower down there. Down the middle of.
So so I've had, I've had two experiences with, so that would be a four foot setback, because four on each side of the property line.
Yeah.
Had two ex- projects, two experiences with that, one was the Waffen project here in Lamore, another one was one I worked on years ago in Visalia. Both of them, in my opinion, did not turn out well and even Waffen admitted that at the. Um council study session, so I'm. For me as a professional, I'm not going to be recommending four foot side yards ever again.
I'm glad to hear that.
For anybody, not on the side yards um. The the other comment I'll make that kind of goes with what you're saying, when we were in the building boom and the oh five oh six era, I noticed some builders. They would look at, they you know, do the six thousand square foot lot and here's the setbacks. And therefore, here's my buildable area and they would design a square house. That would fit exactly in that buildable area because at the time. You could get more money based on the square footage of the house, so they were building, you know, thirty five hundred square foot homes. Where the kids bedroom was fifteen by twenty and it was like. Do you really need that much space? But people were buying them because they were looking at the square footage and they were paying more for that.
Mm hmm.
Um we're not, I don't think we're in that era anymore, but but it really does affect this, so the size of the lot and the setbacks that you set. Effect how the developers can can design their home and in. Again, in my opinion, you don't want to be too far off of what other cities in the area are doing. Because home builders are building the same homes in each city and if they can't fit. The homes that they're used to building in Lamore, then they're gonna, they're gonna bypass us.
Cause we're not going to want to come up with new plans, is that right?
No, they don't like coming up with.
Yeah, they just want to feel the, yeah.
They they come, they want to, they they come up with new plans. Based on the market, what the market wants, and then they hope that they can build those same plans in every city.
Yeah.
Steve, that uh four foot.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation?
Five.
Which which is a net ten then.
At ten.
Okay.
Um also in the front. I've seen this and I've seen this in Visalia for, I don't know, ten fifteen years now. Fifteen in the front for living space, twenty feet for the garage. That way, there's room for the car to park on the driveway, but the living space can be closer. The other thing that does is when the develop, if enough cities do that, and I think a lot of them in this area have, then the developers change their. This the look of their home and when the living space is closer than the garage, in my opinion, the homes look better.
Yeah, it's not just a big flat front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um if you if you ever um. Are can't sleep and you pull up Google Maps and do street view in new neighborhoods in Texas. They build the home and then they build the garage in front of the home. And it's like, it just looks, it's like, that doesn't look like a house, it doesn't look like a house to me.
I see what you're seeing, yeah.
So they have a lot more space there.
Yeah.
You're snoring actually, yes.
Uh let me see what else is here. So there's a table in there that talks about some other cities and what they what they've been doing, that's just for your benefit. We want to make some changes, I there talked about this before, we want to make some changes to the site point of view process um. Right now, there's there's two things that I would like to change, one is that we separate it between major and minor. And so the miners stay with the staff and the majors come forward to planning commission. What that also does is it extends the time period of review for the major because. Now it's getting mixed, like like tonight with Maverick, it gets mixed in with the use permit. Um I've just noticed that like the client gets confused or the developer gets confused like, well, what's? What's the, when is like hundred B over, what is, when is this over and and even the staff, we had a question last week about. Um Maverick was already asking design questions of the Public Works Department. And so they were saying, well, so I'm still reviewing the site plan and they're asking design questions like, so to have, I think. To have the site plan review all at the staff level, it only focuses on. Meeting the standards that the city has set. And then that process is done and then we move to the map or to the use permit or to the zone change. I think having that clear separation is helpful, I've seen that work well in other cities and Tulare and Visalia. Um even Hanford has a kind of a way of of doing that um. And I think, I think that'll make it clearer for them and um. It may make it easier on the staff, because I think there's, we get a lot of questions mid process. What about this, what about that? Some developers want to get the site plan perfect and so they. Want to have, they want to have meetings, they want to come, can I come talk to you?
Mm hmm.
And it's like, just turn in your site plan and let us comment on it. And I think maybe doing it this way is is going to help with that. There's a section on accessory dwelling units. That's to reflect the changes in state law, now that now they have accessory dwelling units, which used to be called second dwelling units. Which used to be called granny flats, mother in law quarters. Which used to be called granny flats, mother in law quarters. Um, now there is a junior accessory dwelling unit. Um, which if you meet those standards, you can have one of each on your lot. So.
Is there a minimum square footage on this?
Yeah, the yes, yes.
Less than five?
And it needs to be in part of the house. So there wouldn't be two detached accessory dwellings. One of them would be part of the house. The other one would be could be detached. So then a part of that that the. The code actually was looked at a number of codes. Actually even considered just punting and having our code say whatever the state allows will allow, but I didn't think that would work. For the public. So the the code that I've got in there is actually based on um Clovis's code. And they were one of the first ones to adopt this and they also. Um, included something that I know the city manager wants to include, which is a cottage home ordinance, which has. A cottage home in the way it's worded, the cottage home would be a specific type of accessory dwelling unit where the city already has. Plans available and approved and all you have to do is pick it and say, I want to build that. And they don't have to go through a building permit. Well, they have to get a building permit, but we know that the plans are already approvable because we've already reapproved it.
Wow. Would it show like actual? I guess you would say blueprints, right? Showing sizes lumber insulation.
Full set of building plans.
Wow.
So Clovis has that now. Um, a number of other cities are doing it. The state, it's something the state's been encouraging.
Okay.
And so. And then also a part of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is a tiny home ordinance. So those are the little homes on on trailers. And so we have standards for those on how they could be considered an accessory dwelling unit as well. And that one is uh patterned a little bit after Fresno's ordinance. They were the first ones to do that. And um. But I made a few changes. That I thought made a little more sense.
Are they getting is Fresno getting some movement on that? The tiny homes?
You had. They're really, they're really advertising it, but I don't know if they're.
If they're actually.
They're actually getting it.
Okay. Yeah.
For me, one of those things is it's it seems like those types of uses. The the people that want to do them, they're so passionate about it. That if you have an ordinance that supports them, they'll be they'll be so grateful. Yeah, so it may not, it wasn't that hard to add it in. And so if if somebody wants to do it, now we can tell them how to do it.
Some of those are pretty similar to. Small R V full time living.
Oh, yeah.
In in terms of square footage appliances and. Concessions you make. You have something small. In order to have something.
Oh, yeah. No, I appreciate just how efficient they can make that space to do everything you want to do. In a home, you know, the the pullout table and the couch that turns into a bed, all that. If that's what you want, go for it. Uh, there's a section about S B nine compliance. This was a law. I think I mentioned it when it first came out that. This was the one that the all the newspapers. Said meant that it was the end of single family zoning in California. Um, what it does is it it in very specific circumstances, a property owner could build a second main dwelling. On their single family lot. Developers can't take advantage of it. They can't. You know, you like Lennar couldn't go take their subdivision and build two homes on every lot. But each individual property owner, after they own the property, could come back and build another unit. Or they could split their lot to less than the minimum. And then put a second home on it and then they could be sold separately. So we've got code in there that. That one was so strange that we just put in. Hey, if you can meet state law, we'll let you do it. Uh, what we what we're going to include in the subdivision ordinance is to say, if you're doing that lot split. Uh, we still need a. A legal map that gets recorded because we care about the. Just, you know, having that record for property owners in the future to know where their property lines are. I'm gonna require them to put in property corners and things like that. Um, and that was coming from the surveyors. They, yeah, that 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 section of this new law um. Rose the eyebrows of some of our surveyors when they saw that. They're like, what? You can do that now? And they're like, we need to make sure this works, right? If you care about property rights, hug a surveyor. That's what I've learned. Cause they're the ones that are protecting. If if you can't, if you can't tell where your property lines are. Then how do you know that you own it? Uh, we there's some definition changes that we're proposing. To get more in line with the state for daycare. We're adding a new definition. Called a short term rental unit. Which most people call either Airbnb or Verbo rental. Those are. So and that's mainly so that we can. That we're saying that they're allowed. Um, but um. There's also an effort to um include them in the um hotel tax.
Okay.
So we wanted to make sure they were in the in the zoning ordinance. So that there would be that definition and legal. So if somebody challenged says, well, I'm not really a. I'm not really a Airbnb. It's like, well, you meet the definition. So you are.
Are people gonna come inform the city when they decide to make it their property Airbnb?
They haven't so far. If you look on the websites, there's already eighty inside the city.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so so we're already legally allowed to get the hotel capacity tax? The hotel tax transitory.
I'm I'm leaving that to the city manager's office, but they're gonna work on making sure that that's legally able to charge them the tax.
Okay, well.
So at at the moment, they're not allowed. And so we do get calls for some of them to office. And all we can say is that they're not allowed. But then you go online and they're being advertised. So this will also will be reaching out to the ones that are advertising.
We didn't think we could stop it. So we'll tax it.
I see.
Um, then there's other things that are gonna be coming to you in more detail later date. Like I mentioned, the subdivision ordinance. We're looking at making changes to our subdivision improvement agreement, which you probably don't ever see, but basically. There's a agreement that the developer who has an approved tentative map makes with the city. Before the city approves the final map. That says. Here's how much I'm gonna bond for the improvements. I'm gonna here, I'm gonna I'm gonna build it in accordance to the city standards. And it's it's got a lot in it to protect the city in the event that. They go awry during that construction process or they bail or something. So. It does, it also has um. Requirements for maintenance. Before all the homes are built so that to say, well, the developer is responsible. While they still own all the lots. So we'll look at, we're looking at that. So we might make some changes there. Residential plot plans, that's something Christie brought up that she sees. Or she has to reject the first submittal of the plot plan. The plot plan is the plan that gets submitted with the building permit. Um, that shows where the house is going to be built on the lot. And so that's where we check for setbacks uh for other for fence locations, things like that. But a lot of times they get rejected because there's something not on it. And so what we've done is we prepared a. Um, example standard plot plan that we can hand out to developers and say, you need to include all these things. On it. So it's another way to try to get things approved more quickly. Instead of having to reject it and ask them to resubmit. And then we're gonna do the same thing for landscape plans. We're working on some standard. Plans to say, here's the minimum of what you need to include in a landscape plan. Yes.
Steve, real quick, what are the uh? Height restrictions for fencing?
Oh, in homes?
Yes.
It's the front yard is three and a half. The being, once you get behind the house, your is six. I think you can go up to seven.
About the siding of the house.
Along the sides.
Is that the same as the back?
Yes. You can go seven with a building permit.
It's 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 a graded thing from the front. Back to the house. So you can't have three to half.
Fence in the front of your house.
In six feet. Adjacent to it. You gotta gradually move back up.
Yeah, and you can gradually move back up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, the two foot stagger. Yes, that's something we just added last week. So. Um, for a few years now, we've had a requirement to say that there should the front setback should have a two foot stagger. So if your neighbor's house is eighteen feet back, then you need to be twenty feet back and then the other one needs to be eighteen feet back. And. That made sense when all the houses looked the same, but we're not seeing that anymore. And especially with the. If we if we allow the fifteen feet for living space and twenty feet for garage, it's kind of like a. In house stagger. So we're proposing to take that out. Um, I know um. Some of these things, that's the reason why we bring them to you is because previous planning commissions really cared about certain things. And so when we think they're not really needed anymore, we want to make sure that you agree with that. So. So that was that was. I think that was that's one, especially if we move to fifteen. Then um. And the developers take advantage of it. Coming back to them and then saying, oh, but you have to stagger may make them like cause some problems on some of the lots. So.
Are there neighborhoods around here that are stagger like that with the two feet? On each and every house?
Yeah. We had a lot of them. Yeah.
My my neighbor is like that.
If you never notice, maybe it's not that important. I think I got through everything, but again, if you want to go back to something or if you have another question about anything. Related to the zoning ordinance, especially if it's related to housing. Um, we can talk about it.
You know, it it's unfortunate that we gotta reduce our lot sizes to be competitive, to be able to attract builders. I think another method by improving our our approval process that that can, you know. Kind of interest people to come along and and build with us. Uh, but yeah, I'm not a big fan of reducing a lot sizes and and getting rid of yards, getting rid of backyards.
I'm not either. Yeah. Neither am I. I know that all the uh. Builders, developers come and they say that that's what people want. That's not what people want. That's what people only have to choose from. So they they look, they're looking at the numbers they're selling and say, see, that's what people want now. It's like this is the only thing they can buy.
I will say, I'm glad you're saying five because I know. There was four and then wasn't there something thrown out there? One time a developer came to you less than four at one time?
Yeah, that's still on the table. So we're reviewing it as a P U D. Hmm, and uh, there's still some more information I want to get from them before I'm ready to make a recommendation on that.
I think if somebody wants to be that close to their neighbor, they ought to live in San Francisco. Where there's a wall between.
Yeah.
The two places.
True, and I've and it's interesting because because you know you. We don't often deal in the, you know, what is the market thinking? The developers kind of, they have got one foot in the city policies and the other foot in what what the market wants. But I have heard from two different places. That particularly in the San Joaquin Valley. Attached homes. Don't sell. So duplex, triplex. Um, people would rather live in a small, single family home. Than a duplex, even if it's even if they have more space.
Yeah.
I'm I'm not gonna comment on whether that's good or bad. That's but that's what I'm hearing. That the market is telling these developers who are investing a lot of money. Now, that's not gonna be the same in L A or. Itland Empire where there's still a lot of housing being built in the inland empire. But that seems to be what. The marketer, the the people that understand the market are telling investors.
I have a question that is probably not related to this commission. So you can tell me that you don't want to answer it. If that's what you choose to do. The past couple of weeks, I've noticed a lot of transfer truck loads going through Hanford and on forty three. And on different arterials there heading towards Corcoran. I really haven't noticed many dump trucks or transfer loads. Coming through Lamar to build up levees. Do we have anything coming through? And I'm just not seeing it or where's all this borrowed dirt coming from? Hopefully build those levees up another, they're talking like fifty thousand. Dump loads or more.
Nate Nathan will address that in the um director's comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
So I don't know. Yeah, if you if you guys, if you wake up in the middle of the night and you haven't thought about this, send me an email. Call me. Don't call me in the middle of the night, but call me. Sometime. Okay, and so we'll keep going this. Our goal is to get this done. Well, late summer, so we can get to the city council by fall. If this changes.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, on to the director's report.
Good evening, Nathan Olson, city manager. See, I was gonna touch on the water stuff. So. They're they're moving the levees west and south of Corcoran up three feet to get them, I believe, to a hundred and ninety two feet above sea level. They're expecting the Tillery Lake Basin to be up to one eighty nine level at at its height. Um, current conditions right now, Lamar has dammed all of our wells and all our critical infrastructure. Out by uh West Hills College and along the Kings River. Outflows right now a pine flat this hour. They're releasing um seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven C F C F S. Which is in a twenty four hour period, uh about twenty five thousand acre feet of water every day. To put that into perspective, Lamar uses seventy one hundred acre feet a year. So they're dumping in one day out of Pine Flat, what would keep us in water for three and a half years. So that's the magnitude of the the water runoff. Um, looking pretty good. Uh, levees are being monitored for our long. The uh, the river here by K R C D. Our growers out there, I'm on the levy, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, looking at our infrastructure. We've had one breed so far from uh Gophers. So about a four inch hole was actually flooding into the fields next to our wells. Um, about six hours it took to get an excavator out and. Plug the hole and and get things going. So we're pretty comfortable where we're at. Um, the city does have a D five dozer sitting out by the college on standby because that is the lower flood plain. Should something happen, you could get a little encroachment. Towards the college over there. So we're leaving that. Equipment's hard to come by right now. So we're leaving that on standby through the next few months. Um. Temperatures are expected to be ninety nine degrees this weekend. So that's gonna increase the runoff. So um, right now they're estimating three point two million acre feet of snow melt coming to Pine Flat. It can hold one million acre feet. It's currently at about forty six and a half percent storage. So they're they're chewing through it. Inflows right now are about fourteen thousand acre feet a day. And they're dumping, like I said, at twenty five, so they're continuing. And they're dumping, like I said, at twenty-five, so they're continuing to lower that. Cork and I believe is getting, they're getting a lot of dirt local out there, but I believe they're working with high-speed rail on some of their basin areas and they're pulling more dirt. And that's why you're seeing a lot of transfers heading that way. Lamoir, right now, we, we are good. I don't know if anybody's been out. They don't want people going out and looking, but if you just go at the end of nineteenth avenue, you get just past Stratford there to the Levy Road and everything to the south and east is water as far as you can see. And that if, if nothing changed today, the water that's in the Tillery Lake will take two years to, to finally evaporate and absorb and go away. So um, we're, we're looking pretty good from a city perspective.
When West Hills and the Charter School Middle College was built, we needed to bring in four-foot pads because of the flood plain. So all those buildings are up four feet over whatever the flood level was. And I don't remember that number. Maybe Bob remembers it. I don't remember. But that looks pretty secure at this point in time, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Matter of fact, even our wetlands just west of the college, they're pretty dry at this point. They were wet when we had all the storms and stuff. They've dried up pretty good and yeah, you can walk through the reeds out there and you're on dry ground still. So pretty, pretty happy with what's looking, what the west side's looking like. And we're continuing to monitor it. PG&E has mobilized an emergency response team. So you see the Chinook helicopter flying around. That's how they're hauling equipment. They're also flying helicopters, surveying. There's uh, King Air's flying around doing topo around the cities and all these areas. So there, there's, there's a lot going on, but right now um, we're, we're, we're fair and pretty good. So hope the river keeps holding as the temperatures come up. Farmers upstream hopefully will be taking a lot of water off the river and the demand before it even gets down to us. But um, some of the domestic wells out by the uh, river have already gone up about a hundred feet. Since that was, that was a number over two weeks ago. So I don't know where they're at now, but that, that's very significant for that A layer to be coming up like that. So that was a, a lot of these changes coming uh, forth to the planning commission. We go into council was, we did a strategic session with council last year and one of my directors from council was to look at all the ordinances, get more business friendly, find a way to streamline processes. And um, get a little more, get a little more going. So we're doing rewrites on a lot of ordinances, not just in planning, but throughout the whole organization. Police Department, no, nobody's not being touched by some ordinance changes right now. So we're expecting to have everything wrapped up. May-June timeframe for implementation, either for the next fiscal year or shortly thereafter. Um, I didn't comment earlier on Mavericks because I was letting people talk, but a couple of things about that project one, we do need the revenue. They do hit a different demographic for gas stations that we typically don't have in Lamoir. And then um, we do get a lot of calls for RVs uh, for feeling and for dumping. So that's, that's, I, I think we'll pull some, some traffic off the forty-one. And uh, people heading to the coast. So hopefully, hopefully that'll work.
Are they going to have dump station there too?
They're talking about an RV dump station. Yes, yes. So so right now, the only one that I'm aware of is at the county yard out on Tenth Avenue. Lastly, and then um, Mr. Franklin, it will be, will be relocating. So he's been on the planning commission since twenty eighteen. I don't know. Is this your last meeting or no?
This is, yeah, thank you.
So I, I would uh, we didn't get it together in time, but we would like to get you something for going away. So I don't know if you're going to be in town. But if we could schedule you to come back as a special guest one night, so we could give you a proper send-off. If not, just give us your forwarding, forwarding address. But I want to thank you for your time on the planning commission.
Thank you very much. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Would, would you like to comment on the June third cleanup effort?
Which one?
Well, you, you hit the service clubs for a thousand dollars each to kick in money to work on a cleanup Lamoir project.
Oh, is that from the downtown merchants?
Yes.
So I wasn't where they asked you guys at. My understanding was they were going to hit up all the service clubs to help get some uh, downtown music. One of the things when we talk to everybody about downtown revitalizations and things of that nature are like, you gotta get your music playing again. So our system's old and equated. Um, we went out and got a bunch of different quotes, but it's about twenty thousand dollars. Um, I will be putting money in the city budget to help pay for that. I did receive uh, verbal on a five thousand dollar donation from one of our local businesses. So when that comes in, we'll announce that. And then I do believe Jesus Garcia has asked the uh, service clubs to pitch in a thousand apiece. I'm hoping the downtown merchants pitch in five. So I'm hoping that we can go five city, five downtown merchants, five service clubs, and then five from our one business south down here and, and get that done. I should touch base in that too. So a couple of our council members, Matthews and North have had some meetings with the downtown merchants and we seem to finally have some traction and some engagement from our local business owners. And um, that's kind of what we were hoping and, and looking for. Since we've got the engagement started, I know Jesus has been touching base a lot of business owners. You'll see, we've been grinding the sidewalks downtown, getting some cleanup done there. We're cleaning up some of the planners. I was just really waiting to get some participation. So it wasn't just the city trying to do it all on their own and uh, the response has been great. Talked to Jesus weekly now and he's kind of the point of contact between the city and the downtown merchant. So look at, looking forward to continuing that trend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Next item from the commission, any requests or reports?
Where are you going?
Yeah. So guys, uh, thank you all. I appreciate everything. You know, it's been awesome working with, you know, Christie, Steve and Nate this whole time and you guys are talking so much. I'm going to Riverside. Uh, my wife and I, we're from Riverside. So we're just going back home. You know, I came here because the Navy in two thousand and ten and I've been out the Navy now for about six years and it's time to go back with family. So yeah, we're both going Riverside. But yeah, thank you all. It's been a pleasure working with you all. You taught me so much and I'm going to go join the planning commission down there. I'll tell you, I'll tell you all the stuff they're doing. Uh, with that, if, if anybody doesn't have anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn.